District five candidate conversation continues. General election begins tomorrow and we have Thomas DeGeorge in studio for today's episode of Rooted in Progress. Welcome into this special edition of Rooted in Progress, folks. We are so happy that you join us today, so let's just dive right in. It's your host, Terrence Middlebrooks. Don't adjust your camera, folks. I am riding solo today. Yeah, we all know that D N is out and we just had this special election coming up, excuse me, special episode coming up. Where Thomas DeGeorge, we had to get Thomas in, Thomas reached out to us last week and said he was only available on this day. So we couldn't end this candidate conversation and not have Thomas on. So without further ado, I want to welcome you guys. Thomas DeGeorge, Thomas, welcome to this episode of Rooted in Progress. How you doing, my friend?
I'm doing great. Thanks for having me. And I know that there was some sort of miscommunication with last week. And so I'm very grateful that y'all were able to accommodate me and get me on so we could have this conversation.
Absolutely, absolutely. So Thomas, again, we are, we're here. Election is less than 24 hours away for this district five seat. You excited? You nervous? Talk to me.
Um, I mean, I think yeah, anytime you do anything, I can remember I used to box and in high school and stuff or play sports. You know, anytime that you're, you're, you're fighting for something, you feel confident. But when you get close to the bell, you know, you get those butterflies and that nervous energy and you just hope that, that everything's going to go all right, but you just work as hard as you can. And then, you know, the voters are going to decide what happens here and I'll be comfortable with the decision that they make. Because we've worked really hard and we're trying to do the best we can.
So why don't you tell the folks a little about Thomas DeGeorge? Where are you from? Hi, are you, are you know, how'd you end up in Tampa or all the good stuff, man?
We got 42 minutes.
Yeah, we got 42 minutes to kill, man. Let's just kick back and let's dive into these stories.
I'll try to condense the best I can. So I grew up in Erie, Pennsylvania. My mother immigrated from Italy during World War Two via Ellis Island. My father, both of his parents also came from Italy. The last name was DiGiorgio, they Americanized it to George. He was a, my dad was a factory worker and a union man. Had a normal upbringing. He worked super hard, lots of overtime to take care of me and my sisters. Eventually graduated from Penn State University with a degree in criminal justice. And while I was there, like most kids, I was working my way through school, working in concert venues and clubs. Did an internship in 1996 at the Olympics, doing security there. And while I was there, I attended a few venues, really liked the area. So I graduated and against my dad's best wishes, I said, hey, I think I want to continue with this line of work. He thought I was crazy, but I eventually got hired by a big venue in Atlanta called The Masquerade.
Okay.
You know, few thousand cap, ran that for a few years. And then in, I believe it was 2001, they asked me if I wanted to transfer to Tampa. They had a venue here at that time that is currently known as The Ritz Theater. I ran that venue from 2001 to 2006, and then it closed in February of 2006. And during that time, I had been in the industry for quite some time. I wanted to own my own business and in October 2006, I opened up The Crowbar, which is located in Ebor City. I've been there for 19 years. And early on in that time in Ebor City, I realized from elders that I had met that when you have a signature business, whether that's, you know, The Masquerade, AKA The Ritz Theater, or what Crowbar has become as a staple in our area, that you also have a obligation to your community and to the people in it. And so I've always been actively involved, fighting for, 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 for the people. Whether that's local artists or local businesses. I've always just kind of had my pulse to it and wanted to do more than just be a music venue.
Well, and let's, let's talk, let's take a step back a little bit. What is it about music that just captivated your heart and wanted, you know, that led you all over the country chasing?
I think especially when you look at society right now.
Yeah.
You know, there's so much, we gotta be on this side or on this side. And I think that what makes music special, music is involved in every aspect of our lives. You know, there's always music, whether it's the opening of your show or a soundtrack when you're watching a movie, or if you're listening to it at home while you're cooking or reading a book, it's always present. And, and what I notice is, and what I love about being involved in live shows where you have people there and why I think it's so important that these rooms exist in our communities is that it's really the only thing. Before we got on air, we were talking about sports because I was saying I was a Steelers fan. You were saying that you were out in Pittsburgh, doing some stuff there. You know, even with sports, you got two sides, right?
Right.
When you throw a concert and people are in that moment with that artist, with that live performance of artistic expression, whatever it is, whether it's hip hop or a metal show or bluegrass or country. In that moment, whatever differences those people believe that they might've had, they are singularly focused and together celebrating that music, which touches them in a unique way that makes them one force. So, so I think that, you know, music's about as special as it gets, especially when it comes to bringing people together and solving problems. Music, it's, it's where people go in their times of struggle as well as in celebratory times. And it's also, you know, even in our churches. It's, music's a huge part of healing for people.
Right.
So I love it.
Well, and I'll tell you about The Crowbar. I've only been to your venue once, but.
Who'd you come see?
Ah, I don't remember, man, because it was someone, it might've been a kind of a local artist night or something like that. It was been a couple of years ago.
Right on.
But I'm from Nashville, man. And you know, soon as, for those that's visited Nashville, soon as you get off the plane and by the time you get down to baggage claim or exit the airport, you're going to run into at least three or four live musicians at some restaurant or stand or.
They have it right in the airport.
They have, that's what I'm saying, right there in the airport, you know? And you could go to pretty much any restaurant, bar, club, or whatever, and you're going to have a live, it's going to be part of a live music venue. And, and the one thing about when I moved here to Tampa was that there wasn't enough live music venues. The Crowbar is probably about the one, and it's, like you said, it's been, you've been there for 19 years.
Yes.
The Crowbar is probably about the only venue that I've experienced. And I say it's just because of me and, and you know, checking it out. It's the only place I've really found where they have consistency with live bands. And like you said, I, I've seen guys that literally you would thought might've just picked up a guitar or stepped up to the mic for the first time, who were pretty decent, but I've seen some big acts. And man, so I, music is music. Good music is good music. You don't have to have a headliner. So saying all that to say that, let's talk about a little bit about The Crowbar and the unity there, right there in Ebor.
Um, I mean, you know, like I said, we've been there for 19 years. When you come up to our door, there's words there that just say like, this, this is a place of music worship. All are welcome. Just come with love. And, and you know, we've been pretty successful at being able to do all types of music and, and having people come in. Especially I think after the first few years, it takes a little while for people in your messaging and your branding to understand what type of place you are and what you're trying to do. But, but I feel like we've been very successful in being able to bring all types of artists from all over the world and, you know, host local, regional, in, in all types of music and have very little problems in doing so. The people that come there understand that they're there for a special reason. They're there to see a great show. We've backed that up with, with local nights, like we did Old Dirty Sundays for, I don't know how many years. I think it was 13 and a half years. We had that night and it was all elements of hip hop. Never had a problem, spent a lot of time with the city when we would have problems and they would talk about, you know, rap and different things. And I would use Old Dirty Sundays as an example and say, listen, you know, the culture's not the problem. The problem is the way people choose to showcase it in their room. If you, if you showcase things around cheap drinks in, 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 you know, not the music itself and not the elements of it, like the dancing, the retail, the food, you know, and, and the music itself, you're, you're going to get people that come and, and, and maybe are coming for the wrong reasons and, and don't respect what, what's trying to happen there. So like I said, in everything we do there, we've always tried to make it count and make it matter and give people a reason to, to want to come and experience it and not ruin that by, by not appreciating what they're there for.
Yep, yep, yep. So you've been in Tampa for quite some time. Let's, why don't you tell us a little bit about just like the way you've seen Tampa just grow and what's your thoughts on that?
Well, I've been here for 25 years. I think Tampa is like, you know, it's definitely growing right now. I, I, you know, I look at the development we're seeing and I think that, you know, development is good. It's important, you know, it has to happen. But I also think that we have to be careful with large development and, and how it's going to affect different neighborhoods and, and different people that are waiting in line for their own development. Two examples I use, you know, if, if you look at the Water Street development, that was an area that was completely underutilized. There was really nothing there at all, you know? And, and they came in, Vennett came in and developed down there. I feel like it was a healthy development. They, they, they grew a lot of jobs, gave it a purpose, gave it a distinct personality, and, and I think that was great. You know, we also had development in Ebor City, which I think you have to be a little bit more careful when you come into in an area that already has its own identity. You know, you have to be careful about going into an area that has a distinct identity, that is a historic district, that, you know, has local businesses in there. Because what you don't want to do is change an identity or displace community. And so I don't bring that up as to point a finger, but to use it as example of, I think, where concern should be when you have, you know, marginal, marginalized neighborhoods that need help. You know, I think that when you look at a lot of areas in East Tampa that, that need help, that are waiting in line and they see a lot of this larger development happen, they want the help, but they also have concerns about gentrification and being forced out of their own neighborhood. So, you know, that's the whole point. It's like, how do we do this the right way? So, so the needs of the people in the community are being met, but we're not transforming that area so much that then they can't afford to live in that area anymore.
Well, before we start diving too deep into your agenda, first let me just ask you, why now? What made Thomas DeGeorge decide to throw his hat into this, oh, this, this race? Where there's already 14, 15 candidates or 13 candidates, 14 candidates now? What made you decide that, that this is now, this is my time?
Um, there is a lot of candidates in the, I'll be honest with you. I thought for sure some people were going to drop out.
Yeah, is that right?
And they didn't. I think, um, okay, so this is going to be a little bit of a longer answer, but I want to give it complete context.
We got 42 minutes, my guy.
Like you said, we got 42 minutes. So this is somewhere I can spend a little bit of time.
Yeah.
Like I said, when I first got to Ebor, one of the first people I met was Don Barco. He was the owner of King Corona Cigar Factory. And he pulled me aside because I think like some of the people that had run Masquerade before I got there weren't as considerate of the neighborhood. So he kind of like pulled me aside and talked to me about the history of Ebor City and, and Tampa and, you know, just said like, listen, you know, you can be somebody that can be a positive impact. You're not just that business owner. You're somebody who's a leader in this community. And hearing from somebody like him that was, you know, at the time, you know, probably at least 20 years older than me and being told as a, I'm trying to remember, 2001, I was like 25 year old kid running that venue. Hearing that, you know, I thought, wow, this guy really believes in me, you know? And he, he believes I can make a difference here. And so I really took that to heart very early on. So, I mean, I would say probably, you know, in doing that, I, I was always involved with community. I sat on Y C D C boards for the CRA. I helped form the Ebor Merchants Association to give our, our local businesses a voice. I, I sat on the board of the, the Ebor Chamber of Commerce for eight years before I eventually became chair of that. And when we would have problems, I would continuously go to city council and talk on behalf of anybody, whether it was in Ebor or other local businesses outside of Ebor, that, that I felt were being treated unfairly. I would go and speak up about it. So I was always kind of like involved in these larger issues. And so I would say roughly 12 to even 15 years ago, people had started asking me, would you ever consider running for public office? You know, you're so passionate. You know how to fight. You, you've pushed back against the system so many times and, and have had success. Would you ever consider this? And I just, you know, I always said I would leave that door open, but I would only do it if I felt that I had the bandwidth to do it and do the best job possible. So fast forward a little bit, 2001, the pandemic happens. I got involved in the Save Our Stages, which I know we'll talk a little bit more. And that got me involved heavily into the federal government and, but in that time of working with different people in different states and hearing their stories about what happened in their cities, it made me realize that there was a larger problem that, that was occurring in cities all around the country. You know, and, and sometimes when, when you have startling revelations and it gives you kind of like this house is on fire kind of mentality where you go, man, there's, there's really a lot of marginalization going on. There's a lot of people struggling. I, I can see this. It's hard not to see it any other way at this point. And so at that time, I started to really consider like, you know, you should run. And while we were doing the Save Our Stages, I, I realized that my time was going to be limited at Crowbar. And I wasn't sure, we were going year to year on the lease and I had heard of other venues that had fallen behind on their rent, being forced out of their venues because developers were coming in and saying, hey, listen, you know, your, your tenant's behind their rent. You know, I'm going to come in, I'm going to pay you now, you know? And then people were just losing their rooms. And this wasn't just specific to Tampa or the state of Florida. This was happening at other, other areas of the country. So long story short, after the long story, I renegotiated with my lease with my landlord, told him I wouldn't miss any payments and that, um, just to allow me to leave on my own terms and I would close on our 20 year anniversary, which is in 2026. And at that time, I was 99% positive that when the elections came up in 2027, that I would run. And I wasn't sure if I would run for city council or if I would actually even try to run for mayor, but I just thought, you know, I, I want to, I've been in this fire and I want to step directly into it every chance I get to try to make a difference for the people that need it the most. So when the unfortunate untimely passing of Glenn Henderson happened, I was actually on my way to Wichita because I do safety and security planning for, for festivals in, in other areas sometimes. And I was on my way out there and I got a phone call saying, hey, this is going to be public soon. And there's going to be a special election. You should consider doing this. And so while I was out there working, I had a little time to think. And then when I got back, I, I had a long talk with my wife and a, and a couple of other people. And at that time, I just decided, you know, sometimes things happen and sometimes, you know, when doors are closing, others open and, and I just felt like there's no sense in waiting, you know, if this door is open now and you're serious. Early on, one forum I did, the gentleman that hosted it kept saying, are you serious or you're curious? That's what he kept saying to all the people on the panel. And I kept thinking, yeah, I'm serious, you know, I, I want to do this. I feel like I'm the best person for the job. And so like I said, sometimes when something happens, you just, it's a calling. You just say, you know, it's time to, to just dive into this and, and stop talking and doing.
Yeah. Well, again, two things. So this is your first time ever running for any political seat, correct? What, what do you say to those who feel like that you may not have the experience for this position?
Um, I mean, like I said, I think what I would say is I've been involved in local conversation for 25 years, you know? I, I have fought. There will be people that will say, hey, yeah, but that was mostly Ebor. I think every candidate in this race, with the exception of Tom Scott that had previously served is specific to a certain area. But I would also say, you know, a lot of those same people that want to poke holes in your boat, you know, they would say, well, this guy, you know, he's just a local bar owner, you know, what does he know? Well, like I said, I've always been involved in the community. With the Save Our Stages, I worked on the federal level through the National Independent Venue Association. I represented our state of Florida. We, we got the largest arts bill in history passed. We got, it was a $16 billion grant that saved venues all over the country. 900 million of that we got for the state of Florida that helped hundreds of venues around the state survive. And those weren't just independent venues. They're also historical theaters, museums, zoos, you know, places like the Straz, places like Ruth Eckert Hall, you know? We did that, you know, and I, and I did that for our state. And then I also worked, I was just in DC a few months ago, talking to the Assistant Attorney General for the Antitrust Division about monopolies and how they're hurting our local independent venues. So, so I've been involved a lot in policy situations. But what I also tell people is, you know, when you really think about city council, like right now especially, like the budget's already decided, you know, so things are going to be moving forward. And, and I think when, when you really strip things down, because people want to, I think, try to make it a little bit more complicated than it is. You know, when you look at city council, what you're really looking forward is to get somebody in that seat that's going to fight for the needs, not only of the people that voted them in, but also the people that didn't, that are the constituents that live in those areas that, that, that are within district five, you know? And so I think that number one, if you look at my track record and all the different things I've done over the years and the fights that I've taken on, you would see that I've never given up. I've never quit. I've never strayed from the job I was supposed to do. And eventually I've always managed to succeed. And the other thing I would say is out of any candidate that's running right now, and I, and I truly believe this is a fair statement, you know, as a local business owner and as the owner of Crowbar, that's always been very hands-on, even with all the other things I do, and sometimes when I have to travel for business, I've been at, at 90% of our events. So if we do 300 events a year, I've probably been at least 270 of them running those events. And I've always been very close to the people that come to our shows. And the people that come to our shows to see bands that, like I said, are either, have come from all over the country or are local, those people that come to the shows are all Tampanians and most of them are people from district five. And so I've, going back to what we said earlier, I'm connected to them. I've heard what they're dealing with. I understand where they're having problems. And, and I feel like as an advocate for those people, you need somebody that's willing to take that fight at the table and remember that that's who they're working for, you know? And, and that you won't be distracted and have that kind of laser focus, you know, sidetracked by a city agenda that isn't going to serve the people who need the help.
Well, great stuff. Folks, we're going to take a quick break. We'll be right back, right back, folks. We're back with Rooted in Progress. I am your host, Terrence Middlebrooks, alongside our district five candidate, Thomas DeGeorge. Thomas, welcome again.
Thanks.
So Thomas, we are going to dive into your agenda a little bit deeper. And we want to talk about your plan of action. And I'm looking at your website and you, man, you have a lot of accomplishments here on your website. But I do want to talk about affordable housing. I'm a transplant. There's many other transplants that's here in Tampa. Tampa is now known as a melting pot. It's very rare that you bump into someone who is truly from Tampa. How do you protect the people in this district from people like me moving in or, or big developers coming in, shipping these folks out of this district?
Well, you know, I'm a transplant too, because I got here 25 years ago. But, but I've seen how expensive, you know, everything's gotten.
Yeah, how the city's grown so much.
It's growing.
Over the past, what, five years, right?
I mean, it's growing rapidly. And when you say the past five years, that's, that's why I bring up like what happened with the local businesses in, in different cities and what happened in, in Ebor City. Because, you know, you had a lot of places during the pandemic that could not open. But at the same time, we're being told, you have to figure out a way to pay your bills. So those people are at a big disadvantage, but while that was happening, development was not only continuing, but it was flourishing. It was like we, we ratcheted it up even more. And so what I can honestly say is it's not going to be an easy solution. But I've been myself dealing with it and fighting against it in my own microcosm for the past five years. And I see it in my neighborhood in East Ebor. You know, we own our house out there. And right now, because the property value is going up so much, even though we own our house, the mortgage payment keeps going through the roof, the taxes go through the roof, the, the insurance is through the roof. And so, yeah, you know, you, you want to see affordable housing. Now, when they talk about affordable housing, it's like, well, what's affordable to you?
What is affordable?
You know, like is affordable, you know, a $2,000 studio apartment, you know, that, that, that five people can't live in? So, so I think that, you know, with affordable housing, this is not an easy fix right now, because I think for a long time, we have been building top down. I think the original purpose of CRA and things like that was to help smaller to build up. So, so I think first and foremost, it's important just to be honest with people that, you know, we have been working backwards for, for a long time. And there's a lot of people that have been struggling that haven't necessarily been first in thought. I think personally, there's got to be a balance in development. And I think that we should be helping to have smaller development that can go into areas and not completely change them where the people that are there can't afford to live there anymore or they, they, they get viewed as an outlier themselves anymore and, and, and they try to push them out. I think that you need, like especially in areas like East Tampa, where they literally have a food apartheid out there. Like they, they have no real grocery stores out there, but you can't.
Food desert.
Right. It's a food desert. But you can't bring like a Publix in there, you know, because that, that would be like the first kiss of death for those areas. So you need to be able to support smaller developers, which by the way, I've, I've talked to these smaller developers and they say when they go to the hearings and stuff, that they're not having success, you know? So. So, once again, I don't think it's necessarily about pointing fingers, but you got to ask questions. You got to say, well, why aren't we supporting these smaller developments that, you know?
Why aren't they having a success? Is it because they're getting outbid for these jobs? Or is it because the people that, that appoint these, these jobs or assign these developers go with the bigger developers, the, the multimillion dollar developers? Is, is that it? Is that the case, possibly?
I mean, once again, I don't want to point fingers. I'm, we're, we're asking the questions right now. But, but, but when I, as just a normal person in the area, that's a, that's also a business owner and a homeowner, and I see the headlines and I see the development, I never see these small developments. I see, you know, the large developments. I see the water streets and the Eboards and the Riverwalks. And like I said, all those things are great, but we got to balance them up with smaller development. So these other neighborhoods, once again, are enhanced. They, 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 they get that small grocery store that's got a couple apartments on it. They have better sidewalks and streetlights. We, 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 we clean up their parks a little bit. We, we lean into local. I've been saying that a lot, like you got to lean into local and not like out of state developers. Like let's lean into local and not just even local developers, but local artists, other local business owners. Bring them into these areas, because when you accentuate those areas and you, you don't, like I said, replace them, but you accentuate them. I, I think that, that there's this, this thought that we have to change everything. You don't have to change everything. You, you can, you can accentuate and highlight the diversity and the, the grit of an area and the determination of an area and still keep it an area for the people there. But you're giving them the ability to succeed as well. You're, you're, you're not forcing them out. You're giving them the ability to succeed, survive and have proper jobs out there and affordable living.
Well, and we could talk about this housing crisis all day long. And, and we know with the growth of Tampa, we know that this district is one of the largest districts in Tampa. And, and from a characteristic standpoint, or a character standpoint, excuse me, there's many different developments. You cross over the streets, you got penthouse, you cross over the interstate, you have, you know, low-income housing, Section Eight housing. Well, and, and with you being in Ebor and a, and a venue owner, I'm not going to say a club owner, a venue owner, let's talk about the policing, let's talk about the safety, policing. Yeah, let's talk about the safety of these communities. What are your plans on that?
I think if, if I can use an example in Ebor, I think the, the first thing is you have to actually look at the root of the problem, okay? And once again, I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but we had a shooting in Ebor City. I think it was, we're in 2025, I think it was.
Was it 2023?
I think it was, I want to say, the years are so crazy ever since the pandemic, because everything blends together. I believe it was 2023. We had that shooting. And at the time, I mean, even leading up to that, there was many of us in that community that were concerned. We, we felt there was weird energy out there. We were trying to work as closely as we could with TPD to solve situations. I myself was working with the venues as, as, as the president of the Ebor Merchants Association to develop better safety plans for them, so we wouldn't have problems in our clubs. And so fast forward, and we have that shooting in Ebor. Well, the first reaction to that shooting in Ebor was maybe we should just shut down all, all the venues at, at 10 o'clock at night and, you know, we, you know, the venues are the problem and the nightlife is the problem. Well, you know, at that time, when the shooting happened, it, it was a 14-year-old kid that had a gun, that probably shouldn't have had a gun, that, you know, wasn't in any of those businesses, wasn't in the area. And so instead of focusing at the root of it and thinking like, why did this happen? How can our local businesses help to make sure this doesn't happen again? What other nonprofits could we pull in that might have experience in these kinds of situations? And really solve it at the root? It became a war between the city and the businesses out there who, who frankly were already struggling, because every, nobody's had the same level of business that they've had since 2020. And it became a, a war to try to make sure that our venues weren't going to go out of business, because they were trying to put extreme changes upon us. And mind you, they weren't going to do that anywhere else in the city. And I bring this up because this came from city council. This was city council proposing this. The mayor herself was saying, there's a problem, we should try to do something about it. And after weeks of going back and forth, eventually, it was decided that, okay, we're not going to do that. But then the story itself of what really happened just kind of, it kind of just didn't get any more attention than it deserved. So, I think that's important. I think when you're dealing with crime and you're dealing with public safety, you have to look at where the problem's coming itself. And it's, there's no one solution to it. You know, you need very strong community policing. I think we have a lot of trust issues, you know? And so you need people to be able to trust the police. And that's where, like I said, the strong community policing comes in. And then I also think you gotta, you know, I know we have like community advisory board committees and stuff, but we, we got to lean into nonprofits, like people like the Andrew Joseph Foundation that, that have had bad experience, you know? Once again, not to point fingers, but, but to have those people there that themselves have experienced the strain of losing a loved one, that, that can give their perspective. So we have a well-rounded, I don't want to use the word attack, but a well-rounded vision of how we can keep our community safer. Because, because the other thing is, you know, the situations that people are experiencing, District Five is a very diverse area. I mean, you've got Ebor, East Ebor, Channel Side, downtown, Sulfur Springs, West Tampa, East Tampa, the Heights. You know, all those neighborhoods have their own individual challenges. You know, so it's, it's almost like.
Absolutely.
And I, and I'd say this is, because as a small business owner, we see it all the time. It's almost like when, when you hire a plumber to fix something, if, if they only look at the first thing, that leak's going to come out somewhere else as soon as they leave. So, so we got to be multifaceted on it. We got to use every resource we have. And then we've got to stay committed to constantly reinforcing those changes that we're trying to make to keep our community.
I think you hit the nail on the head. It's about trust, you know? So it's, it's trust on both sides, residents, the community and then the police force as well. So, let's, let's talk about the noise ordinance. That's been a huge topic from St. Pete to Tampa. You're in Ebor, you're right there in the heart of it. What's your stance on it?
Okay, so once again, when we go back to the, the work that I do with the National Independent Venue Association, and I know there's, but, but this is what you'll get with me as a city council person, you're going to get honesty. Noise ordinances, what concerns me about them is, is how they're structured and what they're trying to accomplish. And once again, it's, it's, it's not a one-size-fits-all thing. My problem is that sometimes when you see these noise ordinances, number one, they're horribly put together, they're, they don't work. Sometimes they're unconstitutional and a lot of the times they're rooted in, I know I'm going to get in trouble for saying this, but they're, they're.
Definitely not rooted in progress.
They're not rooted in progress, but sometimes I believe they're, they're rooted in forms of racism. They're, they're targeted for certain things that areas don't want, that they believe could be troublesome. Loud music, cruising. These are not things that should be strange if you're in an entertainment district or should be scary if you're an entertainment district. And that goes back to development too. If, if, if you have an area that's entertainment district and then people choose to move into it and all of a sudden you want to make these extremely strict noise ordinances that are, are not only 99% of the time in enforceable, because they're, they're not true detectors of the sound. And any lawyer that's worth a, a darn, even though I know you told me if, if I dropped a swear word, I would be okay, worth a darn, is going to say, listen, I want to come in and represent this, because this is an easy win. I mean, I myself, living here for 25 years, have probably gone in front of city council to talk noise ordinance issues over a dozen times. Because the noise ordinance circles back around over and over and over again. And once again, if we have a real problem, I would be more concerned with finding a proper solution than just doing a dance where you're going around in circles. And that to me is why, instead of looking at all these venues or local businesses as part of the problem, pull them in, but pull them in in a way that, that they really actually believe they're being utilized and not just being there as, oh, we're going to act like we're listening to them, but we're not going to listen to them.
Well, would you, would you suggest something like perhaps, I mean, I know things around here in Tampa shuts down, what, around 1:00 or 2:00 AM? Would it, would it be that, like, you know, doors closed or music's off at 2:00 AM? Would you suggest something like that? What's the, what would be the solution for both parties or those on both sides of this, this ordinance?
I mean, I, I think, I don't know what the exact time is. I think you have to craft a couple of things. You have to craft it where it's what's considered an entertainment district versus residential. I think you got to categorize where the sound's coming from, personally. I don't, I don't think you can just, the problems I've seen with the decibel meters is if you come up to somebody's door with a decibel meter, and by the way, it's got to be, you, you can't say like 70 dB or even 85 dB, because you and I, if I start talking a little bit louder, I'm going to be at 85 dB. And, and what you see, especially in areas like Ebor City, like it would be one thing if you're going into an area and there's one business there that's super loud and it's very clear that the sound's coming out of that business. In Ebor City, you've got all these businesses, and when they have tried to enforce it and, and they come up with the meters, a lot of the time, there's so much residual sound from all over the area that, that you just can't get a proper read. And when they try to, like I said, it generally just gets shut down, because you can't prove it. So I, I think you've got to have a very thorough policy that separates entertainment districts, separates residential and, and talks about where the sound's coming from. But like I said, noise ordinances are super tricky, because once they're in place, if they're not in place for the right reasons, they can be weaponized against people and, and I don't want that.
Right. Let's, let me hit you with a hard question right here, or, or a hard statement. On your platform, you have several different things that you stand for and, and what you're looking to fight for if you, once you take office. Diversity and equity, racial justice, LGBTQ plus rights and indigenous rights. Advocate for the rights of individuals regardless of race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, religion. Ensure that all city employees and contractors receive training on diversity and equity and all that city and all, and that all city policies and programs reflect these values. In this today's administration, we know that the, the, all of these rights that I just named off are being thrown out. And if you support that, you too could possibly be thrown out. Take your stand on that. Tell us your stand on that.
I, I see what's happening on the federal level and, you know, how it's being pushed down on the state. And, and while I know that using those words, like that we're being pushed back on it, what I also understand is, and I look at, there's people on the city council right now, if you look at their socials, that, that are pushing back. I can't change who I am, you know? And I believe that, I think a large part of my platform is that everybody deserves the right to, to be happy and have, and have the freedoms they have. And, and when I see certain groups being marginalized, having their rights taken away, the removal of all the art on the streets, like, 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 like we shouldn't be able to celebrate people, it's just extremely frustrating to me. So, so yeah, I think I would still want to try to be as vocal as I could about helping people that, that appear to be under attack. I, I mean, if that gets me in trouble, it might get me in trouble, I don't know. Just doesn't, doesn't sit well with me.
Well, Thomas, we're going to take a quick break, folks. We'll be right back. And we're back, ladies and gentlemen, again, here on Rootin' Progress. I'm your host, Terrence Middlebrooks. Along with me is District Five, District Five candidate, Thomas DeGeorge. Thomas, with elections being here starting tomorrow, how you feel, man? You nervous? Are you excited? What you, did you feel like the, like you've, you've had boots on the ground and done everything you can? And at this point, it's just left up to the voters, right?
Well, I mean, I, as, as glad as I am to be here with you right now, I really wish it was tomorrow at this time. So yeah, I'm super anxious, you know? Like I said, I think you, you know, anytime you're trying to accomplish a goal or, or you're, you're within a fight for, for something you're passionate about, there becomes a point of self-doubt, where you go, is there something else I could have done? One of my favorite readings that I've read over and over again, every time I've been in struggle, and it was actually my boxing coach then introduced it to me before my first fight, because I told him I was scared, and that's Teddy Roosevelt, it's the man in the arena, you know, that talks about, you know, being the person in the fight with the blood and the sweat and the tears, and it's not the critic that counts. And so, as many times have I've read that, if I, when I do fail, it, it still hurts. I, I desperately want the seat. I feel like I can do a very good job representing District Five, and I feel like I'll fight and advocate harder than, than anybody else, just because of, of, of who I am and, and the things I believe in. And yeah, I think we've done really, really well. I feel like our, our, our ground game has been very strong. I feel like I'm, I'm lucky to be around hundreds of people every week that talk to me, that live in District Five. I, I think our social media outreach has been very, very strong. And I know our campaign has also, you know, we have been canvassing. I've gone door-to-door, we've been hitting the phones. I think we made about 9,000 calls over the last few days. We're, you know, one thing I told my campaign is, these are the championship rounds. Like we are not going to sit here at the, at the 13th, 14th round and go soft. We have to fight as strong as we can to try to take this thing home. If we're serious and, and if we want to dedicate ourselves to the people of District Five. And when I say we, I don't even just mean my team. I mean, the people who in District Five that have been supporting me, that are telling me that they're going to vote for me, that are, are trying to get other people to vote for me. Because at the end of the day, if I do get that trust from the community, I can't get anything done by myself. People keep talking about how are we going to get stuff done? Or how are you going to get stuff done? And I'm going to say, we're going to do that together. You know, I think that the only way you can get things done is by bringing in people from all over District Five, building strong coalitions, engaging the community as much as possible, embracing them, pulling them forward and, and, and fighting together for the change we need to help those areas that frankly seem forgotten most of the time.
Well, Thomas, one last question, let's, we got to make this quick, because we're, we're actually running out of time, believe it or not.
I told you I can talk.
Man, I'm telling you. Let's just real quick, I want to tap into transportation. What, what's your, what's your take on, or what's your plan on improving the transportation here in Tampa and this, all this crazy traffic we got here?
I mean, the, the transportation's a, a big problem. I mean, when I saw the story about Hart wanting to, you know, basically, that's a huge step. that's a huge step back. I, and I think, you know, if you look at a lot of the people on city council, they recognize that that's a step back too. They recognize that we have to have better uh public transportation. Um, uh, eventually would love to see that high speed rail, but that's
Yeah.
so far down the line. I think what we really need is to to improve the bus system, um, to improve um, the the bike lanes um in to 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 continue the things and keep them affordable for people and make them more wide range, uh, the trolley. You know, people in R R use the trolley a lot, but I think it's another one of those things that's gotta be on the forefront because it it, like I said, it feels like we we go towards these bigger developments and then there's just substantial things that should be paid attention to within that infrastructure, like public transportation that are super important.
Yeah.
You know, so keeping a focus on it and 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 fighting for it.
Well, again, Thomas, we want to say thank you for joining us. Real quick, before we get out of here, tell us how folks can follow you. Um, what what can they do to to help support your 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 fight in these next twenty four hours?
George for Tampa, degeorgefortampa.com. It's got all my information on it. Uh, I would say, you know, like we've been saying, election day is tomorrow. Um, right now, we have less than ten percent voter turnout.
Yeah, and that's a whole nother hour where you and I can talk about.
Well, what I'll say briefly though is please go out and vote, even if you're not gonna go vote for me, please go out and vote. We live in a world right now where where we should never at this point take voting for granted. Like, we need to vote. We need to make sure our voices are heard. So get to the polls tomorrow.
Yep.
And uh, that's the best way you could support and uh, I hope to represent District Five.
Thomas, thank you so much, man. We really, really appreciate your time. Ladies and gentlemen, um, you heard it. Um, voting starts tomorrow, um, September ninth for District Five. If you're in that, if you're in that district, please, please, please go out and vote. Um, this district is known to have a very, very low turnout. Um, and again, you cannot complain. If you do not go vote, you do, you cannot complain when something doesn't go your way, either you personally, in your neighborhood, schools or whatever, because you can think back on this day, September ninth, that, man, I didn't go vote. Well, you have the right to do that. Ladies and gentlemen, we want you to make sure that you follow us Rootin' in Progress on all your social platforms, IG, um, TikTok, all of that, uh, Spotify, Apple Podcasts, YouTube. If you missed this episode, if you caught the tail end or just the beginning, you can always go back and follow us and like and subscribe on YouTube. Uh, Rootin' in Progress, WFLA. Again, I'm your host, Terrence Middlebrooks, on behalf of Deanne King, Nisha Harper, Kristen McKay, who are the producers. We want to say thank you. Stay rooted, folks.